Other than this variance, it's already forward, it's been five years. We objected it, it's not substantial. And what is the?
Did you get that rationale?
Okay, item number two, two one four zero Love Road.
Hi, Carleen Abdu, twenty one forty Love Road. I'm here for variance for a addition to our existing detached garage. Not really sure on how many feet, actually, but there's nobody on the other side of us to give us issues for it.
I'm assuming you did not get a building permit?
No, we did not. We weren't, we did not know that we needed one because we built it ourselves.
Okay, and it's completed?
It's completed, not entirely, but yes, it's, it's standing, yes.
Okay. Anything further?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, let's have a seat for just a minute. Would anyone like to come forward in regard to two one four zero Love Road? Anyone online? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to close the meeting for twenty one forty Love?
I'll make a motion close.
Motion by Betty, seconded by?
Michael.
Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have a little situation here. They already put the building up, put it up without a permit, and it's too close to the side yard setback with side yard by nine feet. Am I reading that right?
Yeah, but the, it's an extension to an existing building, so that building deferred is, is, is not conforming or to begin with.
Right.
So.
I believe, I'm not positive this, but I believe when it was built, it was probably, you know, conformed to the law, and now it's not.
Yeah, that's about it, yes.
Yes, that's, it was the existing garage that was there. The variance was different from back then. Now we didn't know that there was a variance, so that's, that's what happened.
Let's come forward a minute.
Sorry.
They want to answer questions for us.
Sorry.
If we should give this variance, there's going to be a little problem because we have to still have to give, have all the inspections done.
Correct.
You're aware of that?
I am aware of that.
Okay, so whatever we say helps, but it doesn't, it's not the final answer.
Correct, because if, if, if we say if we detached the new garage that's to the existing, it would be shifted to the left. So it wouldn't even be straight with the.
I understand that.
Okay.
I watched them build it some other time.
What was that?
I watched them build it, but I didn't know you didn't ever send that.
Oh, okay.
Yes, the.
The size?
You have to get the building permit, the sizes, you have to have all the inspections done.
Right. The size I am, I know what the size is, it's twenty four by forty. So the length is.
The addition is twenty four by forty?
It doesn't show that on the paperwork we got. It shows twenty four feet wide, but not the length of it.
The twenty four foot wide, not the length of it, because I wasn't sure if it exactly, but we can always get that for you.
All right. While it's not to me, but it's before the building permit.
Right, correct.
Be right there.
Sure.
Anything further on this?
She said it's twenty four by forty?
Twenty four by forty?
Okay.
Twenty four by thirty, sorry.
Oh, that's fine. So that, that helps because we didn't know the size for the allowable, you know, R one A allows the seventeen hundred square foot. So that should be under, so we shouldn't need a variance for being over the square footage.
Correct.
Yep, so, just wanted.
Okay, anything further? Any, any questions? No? Who would like to make a motion to approve or disapprove the location?
I'll make the motion for twenty one forty Love Road. A required side yard setback variance needed of nine feet.
A motion by John, seconded by?
Michael.
Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, rationale?
Need for storage, looks good in the neighborhood.
Attaching to an additional, I mean, to an existing structure. And, yeah.
Okay, number three. Two two seven five Staley Road.
For variance for?
Yeah, is there an address please?
Yeah, two two five, I mean, two two seven five Staley Road.
That's your address?
Yes, sir.
Right, right. Okay, tell us what you'd like to do.
I want to build a house on there.
I want to build a house on there, it's twenty five foot wide and the lot is fifty feet wide.
Right.
So I want to get a variance, I want eight foot on the right side.
Yeah, it's kind of a narrow, unusual lot, I can understand why you'd want to do that.
I can, hurry, sir.
Okay, I understand why you'd want to do that because it's kind of a narrow, a narrow lot.
Yes, sir.
You just don't have to build a house. And there's, I noticed there was a house taken down already, is that correct?
There was a house on there, there was a previous house and it was taken down.
Okay. Okay, anything further?
Excuse me?
Is there anything further?
No, sir.
Okay, let's just stay right there for a minute.
Bless you.
Would anyone like to come forward in regard to twenty two seventy five Staley Road? Nick, anybody online?
People online, I don't want to be.
Want to find out?
Anyone online who wants to speak regarding?
Okay. Okay, according to our paperwork here, you're looking for a seven foot side yard, is that right?
Eight foot setback.
Right. Okay. All right. Would someone like to close the meeting for two two seven five Staley?
I'll close.
Motion to close by Betty, seconded by?
Michael.
Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, as far as this project goes, it's a very narrow lot. I did have a house on it before. And he wants to basically put another house on it with a small side yard setback, seven feet. What's your opinion?
I got no problem with it.
Betty?
No, it's okay.
I have my.
Nope, I'll sit.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion for two two seven five Staley?
I'll make the motion for two two five, two two seven five Staley Road. The side yard variance of seven feet on the east side of the lot line.
A motion by John, seconded by?
It says east here. Are we, are we clear on that?
Yeah, there's one, one exception here, now the yes, because we had original paperwork is different, yes.
Yeah, I'm looking at the corrected one.
Yeah, that's correct, seven forty on the east.
So it's on the east line, right?
Yes, I believe so, yes, that's beyond the.
East lot line, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, on the right hand side.
Okay.
From Staley there.
Got it. All right, motion by John, seconded by?
Michael.
Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good, good, rationale?
The improvement to the, to the new, it's a new house, an old house taken down, new house put in, looks good.
There's really no other way to do it.
No other way to do it, the narrow lot, to get enough room to live in.
Yeah.
Nothing to do with that.
No one's objecting to it either.
Yep.
Okay, we're good there. Item number four. Let's see, yeah. Three five two one Western Road. Name and address, please.
Alex Deddes, thirty five twenty one West River.
Tell us what you'd like to do.
I want to get a variance for a pole barn closer to the property line.
Okay. Anything further? No. Okay.
The original plans when I was building the house, I did submit the plans with the pole barn, but I would not just move it closer to the property line.
Yes, I understand. I think there's some people online that want to express their opinion about that, but we'll see. Okay, anything further? Let's have a seat for a minute, we've got to see what everyone has to say. Would anyone like to come forward in regard to, let's see, in regard to thirty five twenty one West River Road? Nope, okay, Nick, it's all yours. I'm assuming these are the people that are interested in this project.
We have one piece of correspondence on.
And we have a few. Nick, do you have anyone?
Yeah.
Do you have anyone? Okay. Yes. All right, come on back in a minute. See. Would someone like to make a motion to close a public meeting for thirty five twenty one Western Road?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Betty, seconded by?
I'll second.
Seconded by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's talk about this. I have a question for you. Would you be going to move it over slightly towards the center of the lot more?
Like how much more?
I don't know, what can you do?
I would like the door to kind of match with my driveway, because I have a long lot.
I understand, I understand that. Your building's thirty two feet wide. Garage isn't quite that wide, I mean, the, the, the side, the driveway's not that wide.
It's going to be a twenty two feet wide.
Twenty two?
Yeah.
Okay, and see. You're looking for a fifteen foot side yard setback, right?
What?
You're looking for a fifteen foot side yard setback.
No, I think it was at six.
Right, now variance amount would be fifteen feet, is that correct, Ronan? My thoughts?
See, when you put the building up, the height of the building, twenty one feet has to be twenty one feet, the new regulations, twenty five, twenty one feet off the side, off your, your lot line. Now, in order to line up with your driveway, your garage, you're telling us that the driveway come in, it was going to come directly into the, the, into the, into the building.
So, and so it'll go, yeah.
Right, okay, and so there is no room to move that building over a few feet to get you further off the lot line. Is what we're asking.
I'm just trying to have more space for the kids to play, I don't want the pole barn right in the middle, black and white, yeah.
We understand that.
Okay.
I just have a question, is your subject in the front or back?
Front. Front.
That will affect it. We have a number of people here that are objecting to it. Personally, I don't think it's a huge deal. What's your opinion? See the drawing on?
What's the size of the house?
Oh, it's a huge house.
Is it a big house?
I can't remember the size.
It's a good sized house, buddy.
I didn't pull up the tax on it.
And the garage is thirty two by forty, it's not huge.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make one quick comment, so with the driveway, the driveway is required to be three foot off the property line.
Right.
So, either way, if the building is aligned with the driveway, possibly you could do that, but you could, if it is shifted over, it could easily be transitioned into it.
Right.
One of the big concerns with us building that size is always going to be drainage, you know, what is, what, we don't know what the plan is for the drainage at the time, but it's an extreme ask based off of what is the requirement based off of the height of the building?
Right.
So.
Tell us anything about the drainage?
Yeah, I spent a lot of money last year installing a whole pipe, my, my whole property line, some of my neighbor's septic's runoffs are connected to the, to the pipe I installed.
In regard to the?
And then anything from the pole barn will be connected to the pipe.
With the property line running from the east, from the west to the east, there is pipe, the fullness of it, drainage pipe.
Yep.
Okay.
What's the use for this building? Nothing commercial.
Store some of my toys.
Yeah, nothing commercial?
No.
What kind of utilities?
What do you mean?
Electric?
Yeah.
Water?
Oh, no water, no.
Michael, questions?
No, he's not using it, he's using it for residential for his own personal use, no water or anything, so I kind of like the idea that was brought up about shifting it over a little bit. As Nick said, he reiterated, it could be shifted into there too, I understand, you know, he wants as much property as possible, but kind of give the neighbors a little break, the neighbors are quite concerned.
Now you're asking for a fifteen foot variance, you tell us, what would you be willing to go with?
Ten feet.
Okay.
So what would ten feet equate to? Are you saying moving the building over ten feet?
Yeah, more with, more with, to the other, away from the property line, the building, yeah.
Another ten feet?
No, no, it's twenty, ten feet total.
Ten feet total, so right now you're at?
I want to do six feet.
Six feet, now you're at ten feet, now they're four feet, moving over four feet.
So you will be at eleven foot variance you've asked for now?
That's also right there, yeah. Nick, you have any problems with that or no?
Well, we, if you look at that, that's kind of optimizing because if you look, if you look at the zoning district, it's fifteen foot as regards to side yard.
Right.
Ten foot, it's a little further away from the side property line, so it does give that ability to the neighbors.
Yes.
And it's just, it'd be five less than what's required by zoning for a building that's not, well, I know that, I'm just compromising based off of the zoning side yard. So it almost meets them, you know, I can say, so if you're comfortable with ten feet, then that's their decision.
So we'd be doing a ten, as we're discussing, it would be a total of a ten foot variance.
Yeah.
Eleven foot variance.
Okay, that's what I had originally, I guess.
Yeah, you're right, it was eleven foot variance instead of fifteen, so you can move it over four feet.
Yeah.
I think that's fair enough.
Betty?
Yes, I'm available.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion, the new variance?
I'll make the motion for thirty five twenty one West River Parkway to erect a pole barn, a side yard variance of eleven feet.
Motion by John, seconded by?
Michael.
Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, thank you. Rationale?
Need for storage.
Yeah, it shouldn't really be a detriment to the neighborhood, not at all.
No, there's plenty of land.
Yeah, okay.
I had need for storage.
I had need for storage.
Yeah, so, yeah, it shouldn't be a detriment to the community of that. Okay, we've got number five, excuse me, which is twenty-one ninety-five is postponed till our January meeting. Number six, twenty-six ninety-four, Bedell Road. Yeah, uh, a, a January meeting.
January eighth, I think.
Yeah, February eighth.
Do you want to vote on it? I'll make a motion to table um, twenty-one ninety-five Long Road to the January eighth variance, UBA meeting.
Yeah, motion by John, seconded by?
Michael.
Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, twenty-six ninety-four, Bedell.
Good evening.
Name and address, please.
Yeah, my name's John Moore, I live at twenty-six eighty, Bedell Road, but my wife and I also own the neighboring property at twenty-six ninety-four, which this
Right.
is associated to the variance, uh, we're requesting an eleven-foot variance, uh, to the hundred and forty-foot lot frontage requirement, and we're also requesting relief of two-point-six acres against a three-acre minimum lot size requirement. Uh, you know, we purchased this property next door in order to maintain privacy. Um, our plan is to split the parcel so that the rear portion could be merged with my existing property that's there, and then, um, you know, keep the front house in the front part so that we can resell that. Um, before purchasing the property, I took care to meet with the zoning office, I brought my surveys, uh, legal descriptions and drawings showing exactly what I intended to do, and the property details were reviewed, and I was informed that there were no issues at the time. So, um, I proceeded in full good faith and bought the house. It was only at the eleventh hour before last month's town board meeting that I found out that this existed, so at some point, some wires were crossed.
Okay.
Uh, importantly, we're not proposing any physical changes to the house, the frontage or the streetscape. Uh, the parcel in question has always been a hundred and twenty-nine foot frontage, uh, that's how it exists today, and we're simply requesting to keep it the same. Um, regarding the lot size variance, the resulting front parcel, which obviously right now, basically it's five acres, we're gonna be taking four, we're leaving three-quarters of an acres with the house, okay? Um. It's consistent with the majority of lots on this section of Bedell Road, in fact, on our block from the former Spark Stables all the way down to West River back up to where the commercial properties are, there's forty-six residential lots, thirty-eight of those lots, or eighty-three percent, are less than three acres. Um, and of the eight lots that are over three acres, my wife and I own two of them, and none of those large parcel, uh, parcels on the block have the required hundred and forty feet, so at some point, something changed, but I realized that. But in the end, um, the result of our request is a lot that matches the exact character, frontage pattern, and appearance of what already exists in the neighborhood, and there will be no undesirable change to the property or to the neighborhood. And in short, it's just, uh, variance simply preserves what's already there and allows us to responsibly maintain and use our property as intended and solves our need for privacy.
We do have a problem here, and I'll tell you what it is, we can make little tiny changes, but we can't make gross changes, in other words, to change this, like, can't speak to the rest of the board, but to make a two-point-six, two-point-two-six acre change on a three-acre lot is very difficult.
Five-acre lot.
Don't, I shouldn't say, yeah, I understand that, but the law says three acres. In other words, to make it point, uh, let's see, where's it, point seven?
Seven-four acres, what the front would end up being, which is everybody on that street has that same exact lot, it's actually bigger than most.
I understand that, the problem is we can't make a, a lot less conforming when it's and you can't, you just can't change it from the three acre. There are maybe a couple ways we could do it. But, let's talk about it first, okay? Um, anything else at all?
No.
Okay, just stay right there for a minute. Would anyone like to come forward in regard to twenty-six ninety-four, Bedell? Name and address, please.
Daniel Drugcellius, eleven forty-nine, Whitehaven. I also own properties right across the street from this gentleman's house. Um, I also own a warehouse right there. Uh, the gentleman's been a great neighbor, I'm gonna be honest with you right out front, and, um, I don't see a problem with it. You're gonna see the same house, it's there. Nothing's changed, he's just taking back land and pushing it over the other, because I know he likes to hunt, okay, because he hunts one of my properties. And I get it, I know the rules change all the time and stuff like that, and, you know, uh, I think in my opinion, listening to the story, because he had come to me and talked to me, that the town misdirected him. Okay, and I think nobody's gonna spend that kind of money after going to the town, the town saying it was okay. So, I know that there's problems with the, the numbers, okay? But in this case, you're still gonna have the same width lot, you see the same house, you see the same woods, he's probably gonna still, when he has a party, call me up and say, can I use your parking lot for all my family? And I will say yes, okay, because I don't leave big garbage pile behind, you know what that's like. But, a- at the same time, I think we're, we're I think we're splitting hairs, that's all I'm saying, Bob, and, and personally I don't, this is a no-brainer, in my, in my personal opinion, okay? And so I just wanted to express it because he is a neighbor, and I, and I, I like to get, take care of my neighbors, and they seem to take care of me at the same time, so with that being said, uh, there's enough fault to go around here where things weren't done properly. And, you know, nobody's gonna spend, you know, hundreds of thousands, if not closer to quarter, half million dollars to buy a piece of land, if he all of a sudden was told he couldn't do that, I don't think he would have spent the money. So you gotta give him a little return on his investment, in my personal opinion, thank you.
Nick, anyone online? Okay. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to close the public meeting at twenty-six ninety-four, Bedell?
I'll make the motion, close the meeting.
Motion by John, seconded by?
Michael.
Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a little bit before the meeting, someone brought this to my attention. Not saying it's can happen, but it possibly could happen, come on up, we'll show you. We're trying to work with you here, and I don't know if we can, to be honest. Uh, this is your house here, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, this is the one you purchased, and you, you basically want property next to your house, that's the way I understand it.
Right.
Okay.
Because that, that's the pool, that's the hot tub, that's where I some places.
Right. Here's a possibility, if we could bring this over, have a large area back here to get your three acres. Um. And then they'll still give you roughly fifty percent or more property here. And we can give you the, I, I would think we could give you the eleven feet up in front, it shouldn't be a problem. I don't think it will be. What do you think? Believe me, we're bending on this one.
It's an interesting-looking lot.
I know.
Ends up being.
I thought there was some other drawing here.
I know, I, I, interestingly enough, because I've been here and I've been actually cutting this lot for fourteen years.
Right.
What I'm asking for, plus, um, what does that go? That goes all the way to the back?
Well, you, this portion here would?
No, I understand this, I mean, so the colored portion is what would stay with this house.
That's correct.
So now, mind you, I had a great neighbor, a very good neighbor here, we got along very well.
Yeah.
So imagine somebody getting, and again, I've bought property with many times, somebody getting all excited and want to zip down in their little ATV or whatever.
Yep.
And then we can move.
That's very possible.
That's what we'd do.
Right.
So. That's why I went and said, listen, we could do this, now this, this is bigger lot than right there, than all these.
I know. Problem is, we don't have the authority to do that.
Authority to do what?
To, to make a small lot like that, like this here, this is from a long time ago.
Isn't that what this here? Zoning board?
Yes, we can make, like, if you're came to us and you could say, it would say, uh, what, uh, three-point-nine-five acres instead of three acres, excuse me, two-point-nine-five instead of three acres, we could probably do something like that.
To be, and you know, obviously, I'm probably gonna take a little loss on all this.
Oh, yeah.
I want this. As much as that, so like, I'd be more willing to say, well, how's like, can I go back to here?
Sure.
You know what I mean, but I
I have, I have a suggestion, I, I'm not trying to tell you what to do. If you, if you were to come back to us, you don't have to reapply, but come, table this, come back to us with a drawing that we could work with.
It's not gonna be three acres, though, I've done this.
I don't know what to tell you. I guess, uh, it's up to you, I would suggest we table it for a month. Come back and see.
By the way, I have a lot of whole week costs on this.
Well, I understand that.
Okay, so.
Should we do?
You know. Okay, can I, can I ask what the, what the, what the problem is when eighty-six percent of, I have every single house up and down that street?
Yep.
None of them conform, and I get that.
Yeah.
What is?
We, we don't have the authority to make that kind of a change.
And what's, what's the metric for that? What, what's, what part of that authority, I'm being, just not if I'm learning.
We just can't, we, we can't make
Small changes.
We, we can make a little, yeah, but we can't make a major non-conforming lot, we can't
Right.
make a lot of
Why would that be majorly not conforming? Or to?
You're going from three acres to point seven-four.
To.
Okay.
But I was told I could do that before I started, like.
Yeah, I don't agree with you, I mean, that's, you know, you can.
Like you say, we're trying to work with you on this one, because it's kind of a stretch. It's, it's up to you how you want to handle it.
Well, I don't want to wait a whole other month, I'm willing to go back and, and, and take a look at this a little bit. You know, come, who can I see tomorrow?
Yeah, that's the problem. Well, do you have a particular way we could do it tonight?
Yes, if that, but this is the map, we're gonna be three acres. Like, you go behind my barn and I give it all the way up to here where it's a bigger lot?
Yeah.
You know what I mean, that the yeah, I'm looking for it.
See, the other problem is, if we don't, if we disapprove it, you can't come back for a year. That's a problem.
So you don't want to disapprove?
Yeah, same thing, yes, you can come back with something different, yes.
I didn't come, I'm really hoping we don't.
Well, I understand where you're coming from.
So if you table it, it still gives you an opportunity to see how it can be worked out.
See, this, this could work right here. I don't know who came up with this idea, but it could work.
Because this is a photograph.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is like, like, uh, the previous owner who built this, Paul Wilkins.
Yes.
Um. He had cut all this because the mosquitoes get through, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Knock it down.
Mm-hmm.
So when I moved in here and he's like, oh, just talk to Dave, he's a super nice guy, you know, nice guy.
Yeah.
It's like, dude, do whatever you want to do, and that's all cut, so now, if, and this is what it's actually swallowed.
Yeah.
To be honest with you.
Right.
But let's just say if somebody bought this new house, now they have every right to, that's not giving me the privacy that, that, that we really need, I mean I'm gonna die in that house next door.
Right, I understand, hang on, wait a second, Nick or Rhonda, can you come up here for a second? I have a question for you.
Yep.
What is the, the narrowest portion he could go for right here?
The narrowest he could go?
Yes.
Whereabouts are your drawing aligned, I got this, I'm not seeing what you're doing over there.
So, here, Nick.
Back to this.
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking, I've had to flip it over.
The, the only thing I'm gonna say is, I can't say for certain, because
Got it.
Um, you know, it's, it depends, and you know, if you're looking at it at the lot itself, it, it depends, if you're gonna try to maintain the three acres, which I, I know your intention is not to, it could easily be met with the size of the lot, the side yard uh, I believe it's, is it fifteen-foot side yard for that zoning district?
That's, that's for
Yeah, so you have forty.
Well, that's for a building, correct?
For a built.
Which is not
I understand that, but if you were to at least meet the zoning setback for fifteen foot, that means out of the forty foot, twenty-five foot, and then you go back, that could possibly give you enough space to where it could give you your privacy as well as still covering the three acres, because that's, I believe, that's what the board has hung up on, is that the lowering it less than the three acres.
Right.
Because that's gonna make it extremely non-conforming compared to what the zoning district requires. So if you're willing to compensate and create the privacy you want, but still maintain the acres, the frontage is, like you said, is existing.
So let me ask you that drawing there, Rob, that, what's that, what's that?
The?
With, the, in the orange.
I don't know, I don't know.
So, what, what, let's put this way, you're lot, you're lots
Twenty-nine.
Okay, so take
Looking at, that's probably fifty.
That could, that could be
And that's too much.
That would be too much, because you would be right up, the fifteen would be somewhere in here, which, it looks like it would be past whatever this stuff that
Well, that's, this is my side, so that's, that's, I, so
Sure.
No, there's nothing left, this, don't even, it's homeless.
Those are, Nick, what, what do you think the minimum here would be?
Twenty-five feet?
It would be twenty-five, if you're gonna meet setback for zoning for the building, it'd be twenty-five.
Okay.
Is what you, so. Mm-hmm, yeah, you would need the fifty-foot rear yard, so basically, in twenty-five, back fifty for your, off the building, and that would be
Two hundred.
We got more, more than enough.
I understand that, but you have to at least meet the minimum setbacks for the zoning, zoning district, before you even consider splitting, or taking anything away.
You're, this is what I'm talking about, fifty feet, right?
Yeah, fit, off the back of the house, fifty, yeah, if you're maintaining that fifty-foot setback for the rear, yeah, then they, then you're fine with that, and then, if you maintain the fifteen-foot side yard for the zoning, and then possibly, you could do it, I mean, I don't know what that number is, but I still think you can meet the three acres if you did it that way.
Yeah.
Because that would, that's the one that's really holding this up, at least from what I'm hearing.
We could make this back further here, I don't know if you want to, but we could make it slightly further back.
Listen, I'm really, really good at this, but I didn't bring my slide rule or my measurements today. So, if you thought to approve what we have there right now, which means I can come back for something different immediately?
Right there, there's no numbers on.
No.
It's just an idea.
You know, I can put numbers to it, but I need an, an hour. Okay, so, so that means table it till next month.
It might be your best bet, I think it is your best bet, you really do, I think every, I think
It's, it's, it's a very expensive
I understand, I understand.
Do you rent that other house?
No, it's not for rent, I need to sell it, my mother didn't want it.
Oh, I see, well, I didn't understand, because I was gonna say, it's already your land.
Yes, no, uh.
But you want to keep it and then sell the business?
You don't like what's going on in your house? You have to, to control it a little bit, right?
I did that.
Been there, done that.
I, I just can't admit it. Just couldn't imagine, obviously, a new neighbor moving in and being very excitable and buying one ATV and going back and forth and waving, waving to us all day, so um, we invested in this, I was told I could do it, and I did it. So now here we are, I'm obviously willing to work a little bit, but um, interestingly enough, it still could be zippy coming by. Right?
Very possible.
And I know all the other neighbors. So I don't, um, and
What do you suggest?
I suggest you let me have, uh, the, a conforming lot in front that conforms to eighty-six percent of the street.
I would, I would think that the board wouldn't go along with that, say, I can't speak for everyone.
Right.
My opinion is, try to tweak it and come back next month, it won't cost you any more money to come back next month, uh, with the permit.
Well, I can't agree to that without knowing the number, so like I said, that's what we're gonna have to do.
Okay. Um. So you want to table it?
Not really.
Well, it's a yes or a no?
Um, I would, if you can't say yes, we have to table it.
I don't think we can, do you?
I'm agreeable to it, we gotta, it's gotta be right. Those other lots are grandfathered in, because there's other properties, every time the county changes something, it doesn't go back and change what was already done. It doesn't go back and change what was already done, that's different now.
Why can't I deed that to myself?
Yeah. I have no idea, you better talk to a lawyer.
I do.
We're not lawyers.
Okay. I guess we'll table it.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, uh, let's close, we already closed the public meeting, and we've spoken about it. Um, we'd like to make the motion, well, motion to approve the, uh, owners. Uh, tabling of this property.
I'll make a motion that we table it till next month.
Alright, well, okay.
I'll second it.
Motion by Betty, second by Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number seven, uh, fifty-two forty-three Eastern Road.
Good evening, this is, uh, Karen and Dan Mahoney.
Excuse me, fifty-two forty-three, what's that?
Am I okay to speak?
Okay, can they tell us what, what they wanna do?
Oh, they don't think we're here.
Oh, we're, we're five-two-four-three East River Road.
Chat it.
Anything, Nick?
Hello, can you hear us? Hello?
Can you speak in the mic?
Can you, can you hear Dan and Karen? Hello? Should I put our video on?
No. Danny Karen are here. Or Mahoney are here.
Can you hear, can you hear Dan and Karen Mahoney?
Yeah, I hope you're here, I'm here to do.
Oh, that's courtrooms, yeah, okay.
Should I try this mic?
Uh, I speak now.
Test, testing, testing our mic, mic, can you hear us?
Are you, are you muted at all? Lighten up green.
Yep.
Nick, we can't hear, we may wanna table it till next month.
Testing our, testing. Yeah, our, our mic shows, see? Maybe our mic isn't up, volume isn't.
I see it moving now.
Yeah.
Testing one, two, three.
Can you hear us? This is Dan and Karen, five-two-four-three East River Road. I have to chat. How about we just say requesting? Requesting.
Send it soon, and then take the margin.
Yeah, if they wanna give you permission.
See, Nick, I would suggest, when, when they come in next month, we table it for a month. Can you call?
Uh.
Can, can we call?
Can we call?
Can they call in on someone's phone and put my speaker phone?
Hello?
Can you hear us? Actually, we can go down there, right now.
It's up to you if you wanna go that route or not, with the speaker.
Testing, one, two.
Testing our mic, testing one, two.
Uh, oh, yeah, uh, six-four-nine.
Can you call us? You can give a number. And then use the cell. Enter, then do a number. Enter, so they see it sooner than later, okay. Oh, there it is.
Oh, okay, let's do it. Okay, okay.
You wanna use my cell, I don't care. You want me to? I don't. Just give him my number, you can call it. I have his number, I'm gonna call, I'll, I'll. I'm sorry for the delay. Yeah, do you want, maybe you wanna do that? I would say, if we got him on the line, let's call him, let's do it.
Yeah, get him done.
Okay. Hi.
Hello?
Hi, I hear you finally. Hi, uh.
Be now, hello?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. This is. Okay, okay.
Name and address.
This is Dan and Karen Mahoney at five-two-four-three East River Rea- Road. And we are requesting a variance for our new build house at that address, five-two-four-three East River Road. For ten feet closer to the shoreline than the average. Distance between the, uh, adjacent dwellings.
Okay, is it gonna be any further than this, uh, average sightline between the two houses, one on each side?
It, is, it's gonna be ten feet more than the average, yes, ten feet more than the average.
What is the ten feet, what, what are you building?
Um, it's a new home, it's a new home, the existing home will be, uh, demoed, and a new build will be put up. Uh, the, the, um, house will be, uh, not turned like the existing house, the, the, uh. The face will be parallel to the shoreline, which the face of, uh, facing the shoreline is. Uh, it would be ten feet more than the hun- it were about a hundred and forty. From the shoreline, it'll be ten feet of that one forty.
Is the ten feet, is it a building or the patio, what is it?
Oh, it's a, it's a three-sea- it's a three-season room, that is pro- the protrusion of the house. So it's just the protrusion of the house that will be ten feet closer to the shoreline. It's a three-season room that actually will open up, um, into almost like, uh, like a open patio. With the, you know, doors opening and, uh, so it'll be more like a. Look like a shelter, uh, kind of a porch.
And Nick, we don't have any drawings of the new house on the, on the property.
Yeah, so that's on here.
Well. Yeah.
You can give you a general idea.
Yeah.
So. Here's the, this is the new old house, this is the new house. And this little back part is where this red line is gonna be. So if you look, it's, it's almost the same distance as the house next door, almost the same shape.
Right.
Um, so it's gonna be no closer than this red line, so this is where it's gonna look like, that little back part, which is like a upper overhang, I believe. Will be right here at this red line.
Why is it, why is the red line going there? I thought it had to go to the, to the property, at the corner of the building.
That's what this black line is indicating. So that's, the red line is where the building's gonna be, so they need ten foot relief, because they're gonna be within.
So, so it's building under you right here.
Yes, the red line.
Everyone understand that?
No, I don't understand it at all.
Was saying.
I do now.
Gotta be ten feet up to this line.
Building is gonna stop, wait, there's.
Black line, the black line is a clear line that they cannot pass, but the building is gonna be. Just beyond that, ten foot beyond that black line which required.
So it's gonna be in here.
Yeah. Yeah, so the closest point is in ten. So it's gonna be ten feet past that black line.
So it's gonna be.
Kind of where the house, well, it's gonna be, about the house fifty-two.
Then this one sets forty-five.
Really taking this one, not taking it down.
Yes, they're quite, they're quite there. They're doubling this house, and they're building a new one, and it's gonna, this is how it's gonna fit, so kind of put them next to each other. So, that's the new, the old house right here, we're gonna demo that, build a new house. And it's that, basically, that back is gonna be right here along this line, that right here.
Okay, so is the reason it has to go back there, because this is already meeting the distance where the original one is? For this, the front yard setback, is that why they can't come forward to some?
I don't know the reason, um.
She said it was on the sun.
They're online, you could ask them the question.
Mm-hmm. Cause that would solve the whole problem. I know they have to build on the same footprint, I do believe, when they take it down.
They're not like they're doing that on this.
Oh, they don't.
Not even close.
I thought you had to on, on the water front property.
And that, this is what the variance is for, if they wanna be a little closer, so they're gonna meet zoning everywhere else. It's just a clear line.
Ten feet is always the staple, we never touch it, we never go into the, uh, well, into the, uh.
Setback room.
The truth is, oh, John, this one right here, we only gave the variance over there, one, one right next door.
They had a pool though, didn't they, it was all open.
There was also the other rebuild on East River that you did recently as well, that is very similar to it.
Did this, this area right here is what we did.
The both neighbors are, are, there's no problem with the neighbor over here.
We're, we're gonna find out.
You know, I'd like to know.
Yes, I agree.
Is it putting them back together?
Uh, would anyone like to come forward in regard to, uh, fifty-two forty-three East River? Good. Okay, Nick, anyone online? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to, uh, close the public meeting?
I'll make a motion, close.
Motion by Betty, seconded by.
Michael.
Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. It was your pleasure.
Okay.
We, we, we don't, when it comes to the sightlines. We have a steadfast rule, we don't allow anybody to go past the sightlines of the neighbors.
Done, that's particular one, we did the one right next door.
So where's the sightline? Where do we leave the site? We go from the corner of the building to the corner of the next, of the building opposite lot.
That's correct.
Right? Yeah. So, are both neighbors on either side? I, I, I guess I got a problem with it, because we just won't ever do that. But the neighbor, the neighbor at fifty-two thirty-three. Are they on board?
Yes, yes, we, we, and before we requested the variance. We, we checked with both sides of the neighbors first, to make sure it was okay with them before going forward with it, and both sides. Uh, agreed with it.
Yes, we worked with our neighbors on this.
No, we're just thinking. It's not really clear to me, I don't know. But.
I don't see a, this particular one, a little unusual, I don't see a huge problem with it.
The only thing it would affect would be fifty-two thirty-three, that would be the one that would be immediately affected by this situation.
And the one next door, we already gave them the variance for it, exactly the same thing, for ten feet.
Yeah, but that was for an open instruction, an instruction. Was, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You were not here that night, John.
That's why it's not ringing bell, because I don't remember.
Remember the one, the foundation, it was already there?
Yeah.
That's the one.
Oh, yeah, well, I do remember that, yeah.
It was also the recent one, the deck off the back of the, the building too, that was too close.
I say this is a little unusual compared to what we normally do, no question about that.
This here, if you have any questions.
Yeah. We talked to them, they have a tree. Well. Hello? I don't, I don't think it should affect fifty-two thirty-three, I really don't. Would you like to make a motion?
That mean?
I'll make a motion that we grant ten foot close, closer to shoreline variance for fifty-two forty-three East River Road.
Motion by Betty, seconded by.
Michael.
All in favor?
Right.
Aye.
I, I, no.
Okay. Okay, rationale.
Um, variance is not gonna cause any undesirable change. Uh, it can't be achieved in any other way, the request isn't really that substantial.
And the neighbor.
Their neighbors have said that, have not disapproved of anything.
Right, and we also gave the exact same thing to the neighbor next to it, at, uh, fifty-two forty-five. Okay, anything further?
What is, pretty Nick?
Now, with fifty, excuse me, three-four-four-four Sandy Beach, we've already, uh, given the, uh, extension on that. And.
Hello?
Yes, hi.
Name and address?
Which property?
Thirty-four forty-four Sandy Beach, did you just say?
Yeah, we just gave you the variance.
Oh, you did?
Extension.
No, that's not it.
No, that's a different one.
Oh.
Okay, I'm sorry.
This is different. No, you're, you're.
No, you're right, you're here.
Okay.
You're good.
Been a pretty tough night.
Yes, number eight.
Okay.
Okay.
Tell us with name and address, please.
Brooke Chamberlain, thirty-four forty-four Sandy Beach Road.
Tell us what you'd like to do.
I'd like to build a garage where there was once a garage, and get a variance to do so.
Okay, good. And you need an eleven-foot side yard setback, and a twenty-five front yard setback.
Correct.
Okay.
We ask questions now, or?
Sure, go both.
Why so close to the road?
That's where the.
Why not further back in the lot?
I don't wanna take up the entire backyard, would be a garage, and also, and a driveway, and I'm just putting it exactly where my neighbors say the garage used to stand.
Okay.
Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
And it fits in with the. The other garages, there's a little long driveway.
What's your name? Yeah, name and address, please.
I'm sorry.
John Banazak, I'm the engineer.
Okay. It is awful close to the road, you're looking for a twenty-five foot front yard setback.
Correct.
Yes.
You know, and I have other photos, but you can see the, uh, this is the house, you know, the property line. Is here, there's a long, you know, driveway in the right of there. Um, you know, the neighbors' houses, and all this is.
There you go, I got it. Hold it, get, press it right.
Okay, yeah, there's the house, that's the property line, there's a long driveway. Um, you can see the driveway. So it's not gonna interfere, you know, the neighbor here, he's parked beyond the property. So it's not gonna interfere, you know, the neighbor here, he's parked beyond the property line. So, and because it's a corner lot, you actually, I guess there's two front lots, so the forty foot setback, you know, there, there would be no backyard. It's an undersized lot to begin with.
Right.
You realize that when you, you couldn't even park your car in front of the garage. You'd be in the street.
Yeah, that's fine. There's street parking, so. There's no. We would, I would.
And there is plenty of room for.
No, there's not any room for, if you drive a car, if you park a car in front of the garage, it's, that car is more than five feet long. It's gonna hang out in the street. You cannot park.
Well.
In the garage.
I understand that.
I, I have, uh, I mean, the, the neighbors do it and it's, doesn't seem to be a problem.
Neighbor do what?
Park into the right of way.
Yeah, there's no sidewalk there.
There's no sidewalk and it's a very long driveway. I have another photo, if, uh.
Yeah, I'm not seeing, I'm not, I'm not seeing it right now. It looks to me that if you park perpendicular, you like, you're driving into the garage and the door, garage door was closed. The tire or truck would be hanging into the street.
So the, with this property specifically, it's uh, there's a very large right of way. Uh, I believe, I don't know the exact measurements, but it's probably about good twenty, yeah, twenty to thirty feet of right of way before it even gets to the street and that the, the pole barn or the garage is gonna be set back probably at least close to thirty feet or more from the, from the street itself, the right of way is.
You're telling me that if they pull it, just so I understand. If, if, if this lady here pull your car, I just think if some, it's storming out and you, as soon as you pull up and the door doesn't open, you park out, your, your car is not gonna be in the street.
No, we'd be parking in the right of way. No, no.
That's what I needed to know.
Is it gonna line up with the garage next door? Or is it gonna go back further? Cause this is yours and there's your neighbor's garage. So is it gonna line up the same way?
Wait, where's in the garage? That's not a garage. That is an up pergola.
Oh, that's a pergola?
Yeah, that, their garage is attached to the house right there.
Okay, but they're not in the right of way open yet. Cause I'm just asking where yours gonna be back that far.
The right way goes all the way up to here.
Right.
He parks, he has a big construction vehicle that uses.
Where are you gonna put your garage on? So John is saying.
Buddy, there's a better drawing, yeah. There's a better drawing.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, I, the garage would be right here. Okay, oh, yeah.
Yeah, that gives you.
This is all right of way. This is where the start. So this is all right of way. And he often parks his big construction vehicle right here.
I see it now. Yeah, much clearer.
You could see how far setback it is compared to where, but so it's, it's all right of way. That's good.
Why you got, why he has it there? Get back to him. Uh, check out the side yard as well as the front yard setback.
I don't really have a concern about the side yard, I'll be honest with you. I don't. It's, it's just, you know, I, I looked at it and I read it wrong, obviously, that I thought they, the vehicle would be hanging in the street. It's obviously not going to be. I've got no problem.
Thank you.
That's a tough area over there.
Odd looking lots over there, I think.
It's all I could afford.
I'm not just saying, I'm talking about the lot and how they're shaped. That's all.
I understand.
Yeah, we, we, we're good with the pictures and everything.
Thank you.
You can see the property line here with it, with this kind of spot and you're still in the room for.
Yeah.
I have no problem.
Okay, would anyone like to come forward in regard to three, four, four, four Sandy Beach Road? No, Nick, anyone online? Okay, would someone like to make a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Motion by Betty, seconded by.
Michael.
Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I've got no problem with, with, with their asking.
Alright.
You want me to go ahead? I'll make the motions. Four, three, four, four, four Sandy Beach Road. The first variance is for a twenty-five foot front yard setback.
Okay, motion by John, seconded by.
Michael.
Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, second one.
For three, four, four, four Sandy Beach Road, a eleven foot side yard setback on the west side of, on the west side.
Motion by John, seconded by.
Michael.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Rationale.
Oh, yeah.
What's up? Isn't there another variance?
No, we got, we got two.
There's only two here.
Okay.
What are, yeah, we're only granting the two, so that's all we have.
Is there another one you know? Isn't it?
There's a high level garage. How, you know, that.
That's what the side yards have that.
That, that encompass it.
No, how high are they allowed to go there? Well, we need another variance. Oh, fifteen, you said?
Sixty.
That's what you're doing, sixteen.
Says here fifteen. Okay. Not one good?
They are good.
You have the honor of having the worst meeting I've ever been to in twenty-two years.
Thanks. Thank you.
Oh, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Have a good one.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Rationale.
Yes, rationale.
Uh, they need a new garage. Yes, it fits into the neighborhood. It'll look good in the neighborhood. Yeah.
Plenty of room to park the car stuff.
Plenty of room to park the car off the street.
Okay, uh, thank you. Okay, minutes. I'm assuming everyone has read the minutes of October, October second.
Yes, yes.
Most due approval by Betty.
Joe.
Seconded by.
Michael.
Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and don't leave. Okay, meeting of November sixth adjourned at eight twenty-three.